Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission meeting. We are a commission appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings and to make recommendations to the city council on planning items. Please note that the city council rules state that the public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the planning commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the city council. Tonight's cases are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city council next month. Agendas can be found at topeka.org. Many of tonight's cases involve public hearings. For those cases, the procedures will be as follows. First, the planning department staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or their representative. Then, we will receive public testimony. Public comments should be addressed solely to the chair and are limited to four minutes. Chris, take the roll, please.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Ms. Messina?
Here.
Ms. Cavazos?
Here.
Mr. Freed?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Canar?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. Ringler?
Here.
We have nine in a form.
Thank you, Chris. All right. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Barring any need for a discussion, if anybody's got anything they need to point out, please do so. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
I would move for approval of the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Approval has been -- there's been a motion for approval and a second. Chris, please take the vote.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Ms. Messina?
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos?
Aye.
Mr. Freed?
I abstain since I wasn't at the last meeting.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Abstain.
Mr. Canar?
Aye.
Mr. Warner?
Abstain.
And Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0 with three abstaining.
Thank you. Are there any communications to the commission?
Mr. Chairman, no, not really. I just wanted to welcome Commissioners Warner and Freed to the body. I think we introduced them, I think, the last time, and they came back, so it's a good sign. So, we've got a full group tonight, so good to know.
Like Dad might welcome the board as well. Good luck tonight. You got to come for a fun one to get started. Off we get rolling. This time, are there any declarations by any commissioners of conflict of interest or ex parte communications? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearings, beginning with PUD 1703 by Frank Mead. And we will have the staff do the presentation.
Yes, Commissioners, good evening. On August 21, 2017, the Planning Commission considered this application to amend the zoning district classification of the property from R1, single-family dwelling district, to PUD planned unit development with I1, C4, and ONI1 use groups to provide for construction and use of self-service storage units within multiple buildings, climate-controlled self-storage, and multiple office buildings on a 10.7-acre site at the northeast corner of southeast 29th Street and southeast Wittenburg Road. The commission previously opened the public hearing and took public testimony, closed the public hearing, and upon deliberation moved to defer further consideration of the matter to the meeting of this evening. In the staff report presented to the commission, staff had recommended disapproval of the PUD master plan. In the event the commission wanted to recommend approval, the staff report also included a list of 17 conditions. The applicant submitted a revised PUD master plan on September 14, 2017. Staff have reviewed it for compliance with conditions concurred to by the planning commission. It states that these conditions were met with the exception of condition 11. Condition 11 had to do with adjusting the phasing by increasing the amount of office space completed within Phase 1 and reducing Type 2 storage by 2/3 of the proposed square footage, with the result that office buildings are more predominant. As indicated in the land use table in the staff report, although self-storage Type 2 has in the most recent PUD master plan been reduced by 22,150 square feet, Type 2 storage still comprises the predominant land use within the master plan at 45% of total square footage, with self-storage Type 1 comprising another 37% of square footage, and office and other uses comprising 19%. As indicated in the previous staff report, staff recommend disapproval of the proposed PUD master plan due to the inclusion of self-storage -- excuse me, self-service storage Type 2, a lack of assurance of visually appealing design consistent with the character of the surrounding area and consistency -- or inconsistency with the Topeka Land Use and Growth Management Plan 2040. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available to answer questions you may have.
Right, Commissioners, does anybody have any questions for staff at this time? Thank you. We now have the applicant begin presentation.
I want to make a statement on the thing. Appreciate it. They've worked on it very hard. They've worked on it very hard. Really appreciate stuff. This thing started out as very relatively simple, relatively small design. We knew it'd expand. I want to thank all the people for their input and stuff on it because it grew with that input. It grew with the planning department's input, and it changed, and it got to be what, you know, I was pretty happy with, at least the quality level of it, because quality was one of the main factors that we wanted. It's the area I live in. I wanted to make sure it improved the area. We wanted to provide services to the east side of Topeka, which we felt they needed, and our survey information indicated they needed. And very importantly, we wanted to provide recreational value to the lake, a place to store your boats, a place to store your RVs. We do this in Lawrence, very successful, works out very well with the lake. And in the old days, believe it or not, you could actually even rent from the county land up there and store your boat right on the lake and build a build house. And so, we felt there was still those needs for some people to be that convenient so that they could use it. In my young days, I actually would take off at lunch, drive out there, take the boat around, and then go back afterwards. I had to dry off, but I managed to make it. It may be a little late, but I made it. And the other thing we didn't want to -- the fourth item that we wanted to make sure was that we didn't lose money trying to promote the east side of Topeka. Well, what happened in the process of going through and putting this thing together and meeting all the demands, we found out that we ended up losing a lot of the services and stuff that we wanted to provide. They disappeared. Since our last meeting, the boats and RVs disappeared. Well, would we make any money out of it? Probably not after you take out all the things. So, we had one thing left, a quality design. Out of all this, we ended up with a quality design meeting one of our standards. Well, one out of four isn't bad, you know. What can you say? One out of four. But on the other hand, one out of four is not enough to make a project. We're pulling it. The end of the project. Any questions? All righty. I probably didn't have the answers, anyway. Y'all take care.
Brian, you're at this time. Recommendation on how we proceed here. Being withdrawn, we just move on to the next item?
Sure. I -- well, not -- if that's -- you have three options. One, we don't have a -- anything in writing, although we heard something here tonight. So, technically, you have -- you still have an option if you want to open and hear any testimony. If not, then you also have the recommendation that went before you from the last time. And so, I think for now, what I would do is just not take any action until such time as we have something in writing, which is as good as what we had tonight.
Okay?
And Mary?
Yes, Ms. Canar.
I guess I would just like to get some verification from Mr. Mead. Are you withdrawing your application for the rezoning change? Mr. Mead?
Hey, Mike. Do you have that? I'm sorry. All right. Any questions? I'm sorry. My apologies. I thought that was all there was to say.
No. Mr. Mead, I just wanted to ask you, are you withdrawing your application for the zoning change?
That's what I'm saying. I sure am.
Okay.
It wasn't clear, but I did this. I mean, this withdrawal, okay?
All right.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I hope something -- I would like to say something. The dam's a high-hazard dam. County has to recognize that liability. They're liable for that area down below, same even though it's city property. They're liable because it's their dam. It's the city's area. They're liable down there. Got to be careful what you put in. You put residential, you put lives at risk. You've got to think about that. Somebody's taking responsibility for putting lives at risk, and the state regulations and stuff tend to frown on those kind of things. So, keep that in mind when you're looking at that area in the future and for what possibilities are. We'd be happy to come back and take a look at it, something else. But I think the city -- the planning department really needs to decide what they're going to do with it. What's it going to be? We spent weeks and weeks discussing alternatives, things like that. We tried to pick the one with the least environmental impact, the least impact to the people around it, and try to contribute something to the lake and to the area. I wish you luck on whatever else goes in there, and I hope it's -- they work as well, trying to work themselves into the community and stuff. Now, can I go?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mead.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I didn't mean to interrupt, but I thought it was all right.
In light of the fact that he's withdrawing his application, there's really no action to be taken tonight. The public hearing was closed a couple of months ago, so I think we can move on to the next item.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Canar. All right, moving right along.
Hi, ma'am.
We're going to wait until everybody clears the room to call the next item.
He was doing --
I was like, he couldn't miss us.
Maybe it's two. I think it's two.
Mostly it's high-hazard status because of the population.
I could buy him in there somewhere.
There it goes.
Just don't lose the potential.
We lost our audience.
All right. I think it's quiet enough to proceed. We'll move on to public hearing number two, Z1704. Ms. Nunabel?
Yes, Commissioners, this case is an application submitted by Mr. David Bissard for zoning reclassification from ONI1 office and institutional district to C2 commercial district. The application is for a property located, 1.4-acre site located at 2655 southwest Wanamaker Road and southwest 27th Street. The change in zoning to C2 will provide for the expansion of an existing office building and larger replacement sign to accommodate an increased number of tenant office spaces. The subject property had been zoned R1, single-family residential until 1981, when zoning was changed to GPBC, Commercial Plan Business Center. In 1990, another zone change to the site resulted in zoning of DNO, Dwelling and Office District, which later converted to current designation of ONI1. The adjacent land to the north is zoned C2 commercial with an office building. The land to the east across Wanamaker Road is R1, single-family residential, with currently two churches on separate properties. To the south, across 27th Street, is an office building with C4 commercial zoning. The adjacent land to the west is zoned PUD planned unit development for multifamily residential. The purpose of the proposed C2 zoning district is to provide all its commercial activities which serve a major segment of the total population. This is from our -- this is language from our zoning code. In addition to a variety of retail goods and services, these centers may typically feature a number of large traffic barriers that require access from major thoroughfares. A relatively broad range of land uses are permitted within C2 district. Civic cultural uses include artist studio, clubs, lodges, museums, libraries, government services, indoor and outdoor recreation, and religious assembly. Office commercial uses include banks, funeral homes, hotels, package liquor sales, pharmacies, and office professional offices. Current zoning for the subject site of ONI1 provides for a maximum building ground floor size of 7,500 square feet, while proposed zoning of C2 provides for a maximum building ground floor size of 50,000 square feet. Should the proposed zone change be approved, the applicant is anticipating an expanded building encompassing approximately 17,000 square feet. In regard to allowable signage, the current zoning of ONI1 provides for a monument-type sign limited to a maximum of 50 square feet per signed face with a maximum height of 5 feet, while proposed zoning of C2 provides for signs with a maximum of 200 square feet with a maximum height of 35 square feet. Actually, the current sign does exceed that normally allowed in the district due to a variance that was approved in the past. The Topeka Land Use and Growth Management Plan 2040 includes the subject site on the future land use map as existing strip commercial area. Future land use exhibit is included in your reports as an attachment. Such areas are so designated because they have been identified as requiring special redevelopment consideration in order to lessen detrimental effects along arterial roadways of, quote, "strip commercial development." The owner-applicant has conducted a neighborhood information meeting on September 21. Two people representing a church located on the opposite side of Wanamaker Road attended the meeting and inquired of the subject's application and zone change and expressed no concerns with the proposed change. Based on the existing conditions of the subject site and surrounding properties, the proposed C2 zoning is compatible with the existing and desired future character of the neighborhood. The change in zoning and the planned expansion of the existing building will not have a negative effect on nearby properties inasmuch as office uses are appropriate transitional uses when located in proximity to higher-density residential, as is the case with the subject site. Although there is a potential for converting from the existing office use to retail or other commercial uses should the requested change be approved, most commercial uses do have a significantly more stringent off-street parking requirement. Furthermore, the configuration of the existing building originally as a bank and more recently as individual tenant spaces does not seemingly lend itself well to use as commercial retail spaces. Approval of the proposed zone change will allow for the expansion of the existing building by providing additional office spaces in response to apparent market demand for such office space within the area. Based on findings and analysis included in the staff report, planning staff do recommend approval of the zoning reclassification from ONI1 office and institutional to C2 commercial district as proposed. This concludes staff's presentation.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Nunabel? Please, Mr. Armstrong.
Since we're rezoning only, that's why we're not asking to see anything on the proposed building expansion and what it would look like, and is it going to look the same as it does now? And any of those details?
Yes, Commissioner Armstrong, for the proposed zone change that we didn't feel was required for review of the proposed change, they are anticipating submitting a plan for expansion through the site plan review process, in which case those details will be coming forward. But the applicant does anticipate that the expansion will reflect the current design of the building.
Thank you.
The change in the sign height, is there another sign? Is the Capital Federal sign? Is there another sign along that road that would be at the same height that this zoning would allow, this zone change would allow?
I'll respond to that, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Freed, the sign to the north is a larger sign. In fact, that property was rezoned to C2 for the purpose of allowing a larger sign. I don't know the specific height of that sign, but I recall that it's close to the maximum for that zone, which is 35 feet. I think it's probably 30 feet.
Okay.
The sign on the property to the south, that property's on C4, that sign is a smaller sign, more like an office-type sign.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. I'd like to hear from the representative of the applicant. Here we go.
No, it's not Halloween yet. Members of the planning commission, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity to be here representing Mr. Bissard. My name is Scott Gales. I'm an architect with Architect One. Our office is at 906 South Kansas Avenue here in Topeka. I'm here more to just answer any other questions you might have, but I do want to highlight a couple things. You'll note that they mentioned the existing square footage actually exceeded that that was allowed by the current zoning. It was around 12,400 square feet, met the bank requirements and the tenant space requirements inside. Zoning only allowed 7,500 square feet, so it was already existing non-conforming. The signage also exceeded. I don't have a history on the building. It's been there for 25-plus years. The zoning may have been looked at differently at the time this all transpired, but due to the success of my client's property and the fact that several years ago, when the bank closed and they were just seeing an underperforming piece of this property, which was the drive-thru, not being used for anything other than to hide your car when it looked like it might hail during a thunderstorm, they realized that there was an opportunity to add some additional square footage, create some additional office space. They have title company in there, an insurance company, investment company. This is kind of your perfect building on a corner for professional office users, and he had demand for additional office space if he could provide it, and so, that's what he's looking at. So, however, as you can tell by the ONI zoning, the site wouldn't allow for it to be increased. So, in this case, in order to bring the signage into conformity, to bring the square footage of the building into conformity, it's better suited to be C2 property. And since we have the Sunflower Bank property to the north, that's already C2, and then across the street, we have property to the C4. The zoning map kind of shows that whole strip is C2 or C4 zoning, so it's actually very much in line. And you have the higher-density multifamily housing to the west, and across the street, we have churches. So, it's Wanamaker, and as we all know, based on traffic, it's kind of a commercial area. So, the site is not conducive for retail. If you try to put a coffee shop in there, you're creating a bottleneck. It's just not -- if you try to put anything else in there that's retail, it's just not good for it, even though that can be allowed. He understands his best and highest use is office space, and that's what his game plan is. We do have a concept prepared that we're ready to submit for building permits. It's a 5,000-square-foot addition that basically brings it to 19,500 square feet, which is far under the maximum that's allowed, but we have no further room. There is no more space on the site. So, you know, even though we'd be allowed to go substantially larger, this site is about -- that's about what we can do with it. So, and the look will be kind of a modernization of the facade. We're taking the Mansard off and kind of modernizing it a little bit, newer materials, new finishes, but using some of the same bricks. So, with that, I'd stand for any questions you have, and hopefully ease your concerns about the rezoning.
All right. Commissioners, does anybody have a question for Mr. Gales?
Thank you.
Very much. Okay, this time, I'd like to bring any members of the public forward to testify that would desire to do so. Okay, seeing nobody approaching, last chance. Thank you. We'll close the public hearing, open it for conversation among the commissioners. Anybody have any major heartburn on this? All right. I'd entertain a motion.
Sir?
Yes.
I would move that based on the findings of the staff report, I'd move to recommend approval of the reclassification of the property to C2 commercial district.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Is there a second? Any objection? All right, Chris, please take the roll.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Mr. Canar?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Freed?
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Messina?
Aye.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Motion passes 9-0-0.
Thank you. Moving to public hearing three, Z1705 by Franklin E. Webb. Our presentation will be by Ms. Driver.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is case Z175 by Franklin E. Webb. He's requesting a zone change from RR1 residential reserve district and C2 commercial district, all to R1, single-family dwelling district. His property is located at the northwest intersection of southwest 53rd Street and southwest Wanamaker Road, comprises approximately 38-acre parcel. The C2 comprises 18.36 acres. The RR1 portion of the tract comprises approximately 19.64 acres. His intent here is to construct a new single-family residence on the entire 38-acre parcel, continue to use remaining property as pasture for livestock. Ultimately, he wants to tear down the house that's there and build a new house, which is why he needs to rezone it back to R1. The house is really considered legal, non-conforming, and C2. The property was annexed in 2007, near or around the same time as Lawrence Bay Estates. I'll go over a little of the zoning history on this, since there have been several rezoning requests on the property in the past. The past actions -- there were several past actions done in 2008, requesting to rezone the property from both C4 to both C4 and C2. Those were either disapproved or withdrawn prior to proceeding on to city council. The most recent case in 2009 was approved by the city council that rezoned the 18.36-acre portion of the 38-acre property. It has been marketed for commercial use for nearly 10 years with no interested buyers. Property's not platted. However, the development of a single-family house does meet the city's platting exemption criteria. Platt would be required if the property owner asked to connect a city sewer. The character of the neighborhood is really comprised of rural three-acre or larger lots, rural residential uses to the southeast and west, Lawrence Bay Estates and its adjoining subdivisions that were platted around the same time in 2008, lie to the north. Approximately 430 platted lots remain undeveloped in Lawrence Bay and the adjoining subdivisions. As mentioned earlier, there's been little interest from a commercial developer in the 10 years since the annexation occurred. The overriding kind of policy here is that under the city's current land use and growth management plan that was just adopted in 2015, the city's policies about infrastructure availability and infill development have changed since 2007. The Land Use and Growth Management 2015 now focuses more on compact and mixed-use development that lowers your municipal service costs. City sewer is not available to the property yet, and for one house would be quite cost prohibitive to extend. The property was annexed and zoned far in advance of having urban services, and by today's standards, isn't consistent with the Land Use and Growth Management Plan. In the future, neighborhood commercial uses may be supported here at the intersection, but the development should be rezoned when the area is ready to support it. There is evidently a hardship on the landowners since it's been zoned for commercial uses for nearly 10 years, and there's been no interest from a commercial developer. Staff is recommending approval. The applicant's representatives are here to take your questions, and I'm open for any questions you may have. Thank you.
I noticed on the color map, we have L-shaped open area to the west, and it's west and south of the property. Is that a drainage system, or is it not subdivided in any way?
Which map are you referring?
Yes, yes. Either one of those. The L-shaped green area?
The L-shaped green area. The property, that's just the zoning layer, only the portion in red was rezoned to commercial. That's the only tract that was rezoned, rezoned by a meets-and-bounds description. No, it's not platted.
Okay.
Yeah. For -- The remainder of the parcel was left RR1, sort of as a transition from the commercial to the RR1.
Okay.
And you said it does not have to be... It doesn't have to be platted, if it's residential?
It would need to be platted if they have to come in and connect up to city sewer in the future.
That's the only condition? Okay.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Next. So representative of the applicant or the applicant here to...
Good evening, Commissioners. Mark Boyd with SBB Engineering. I don't really have anything to add to this. We're here if you have questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, I would open it for public testimony this time, to anyone that wishes to address the Commission. All right, then I will close the public hearing. And any conversation regarding this, Commissioners? All right. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to recommend approval to the governing body, the amendment to the conditional use permit, CU17/1, and hereby replacing SP60/2 by Petrol Surgical based on the findings and analysis listed in the staff report and subject to the conditions they have listed.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Miss Feeney?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Maybe you've got the wrong...
Have you got the...
Oh, I'm one step ahead. I apologize. I would amend the motion.
I was like...
Okay.
Bear with me.
We'll try this again.
We'll try it again. Based on the findings and analysis of the staff report, I move to recommend approval to this governing body of the reclassification of the subject property from ONI1 Office and Institutional District. That's not it either.
No.
Maybe someone else would like to do this.
Third time is the charm.
Here we go. Two senior moments. Okay. Based on the findings and analysis listed below in the staff report, I move to recommend to the governing body, again, approval of the reclassification of the subject property from RR1 Residential Reserve District and C2 Commercial District, all to R1 Single Family Dwelling District.
Second. Thank you for jumping in there. Is there any discussion? All right. Chris, please take vote.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Ms. Messina?
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos?
Aye.
Mr. Freed?
Aye.
Mr. Haw?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Knar?
Aye.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Motion passes 9-0.
Okay, moving on to Public Hearing Four, CU171 by Doorstep, and we will again have presentation by Ms. Driver.
Thank you. Okay, this next case is by Doorstep Inc. The property is located 1119 Southwest 10th Avenue. They are requesting an amendment to a conditional use permit, which is case SP60/2 formerly considered a special use permit for orthopedic appliance sales. This amendment would allow them to use the building for retail sales that's subordinate in an association with the principal use of the building for an office. Property is currently zoned ONI2 Office and Institutional District. Doorstep is currently providing services... They're using the building as an office. Some of the services they provide there are food and clothing bank, rent and utility assistance, prescription and dental vouchers, transportation assistance, all ONI2 uses. They also, in another location, 1196 Washburn, they operate the Dovetail Shop, which is a thrift store. Their intention here in the amendment is to move, relocate the Dovetail Shop into a 1,700-square-foot portion of the building at 111910th Avenue. That change would then allow Doorstep to combine its services into one location, which they feel is more efficient for their staff and volunteers. Staff made a determination that there's an old special use permit on the property. That is a pre-1992 conditional use permit that allowed specifically retail sales of orthopedic appliances. That was allowed in association with the use of the building for a medical clinic. Just some background on the SUPs. They, in 1992, with the zoning code overhaul, they converted over to CUPs. The SUPs do remain with the land. You can't get a new SUP, but staff and legal staff in this case determined the SUP could be amended, since the old SUP already allowed some retail, but on a very narrow scale. So what they'd be doing in this case is amending that SUP, which is now a CUP, to allow retail that's subordinate in nature to the use of the principal building as an office. So essentially, they're removing the limitation for orthopedic appliance sales. Continuing on with the history, the orthopedic clinic remained in the building until at least 1988. Doorstep purchased the building in 1993 and then began using it for its offices. So that brings us to the present, where they want to move the Dovetail Shop, the thrift store, into the building. In 1960, they also... Another special use permit was approved on the R2 property to the south of the building, which is zoned... It's zoned R2. There's a parking lot there. That SUP was approved so they could have a parking lot in association with their building. So there is a parking lot that's connected to the building. They will be adding four additional parking stalls in that parking lot, which they have determined they're able to do. That was staff determined that was required to... Because they were changing the use of a portion of the building from office to retail. So that's the additional parking they need to go from office to retail use. The building also has some cutback parking along Buchanan, which they're allowed to use as long as it's available, but it's public parking. The retail sales is limited by the CUP to Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Essentially, the 1,700-square-foot space in the building they'll be using for retail is only 12% of the total floor area of the building. The amendment is in conformance to the draft Tennessee Town Neighborhood Plan, which you'll hear later tonight. That plan encourages the adaptive reuse of existing residential buildings along 10th Avenue instead of promoting new strip commercial development. A lot of the buildings along 10th Avenue are former houses that have changed to office uses or multifamily uses. Some of the restrictions on the CUP that limit the retail there and limit the impact of retail are... The hours of operation of the retailer are limited. The signage is limited to what is currently allowed in the ONI2 zoning district. Also, by consolidating their operations, this improves how Doorstep can collect and manage its donated items and keeps items from piling up outside the building, which was a concern at the Neighborhood Information Meeting they had. In addition, as I mentioned, they'll be adding some parking to the parking lot that they have. Staff does recommend approval, subject to some conditions in the staff report, which primarily are just to indicate that the retail is subordinate incidental to the use of the building as an office. And then another condition about items that are donated and dropped off overnight shall be moved indoors within the following day and not allowed to accumulate outside, which is in response to a concern at the Neighborhood Information Meeting. The applicants are here to take your questions as well, and staff is recommending approval. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there questions for Ms. Driver? Seeing none, I'd love to hear from the applicant.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Kane. I'm the executive director at Doorstep. Annie did a good job outlining it, but Doorstep has applied to amend the conditional use permit for our building in order to move our thrift store, the Dovetail Shop, into the north end. As she said, the space, 1,768 square feet at the north end, equates to 12% of the building, so the remaining 88% would continue to be used as office space for Doorstep and our renter, Topeka Literacy Council. Doorstep has been providing emergency services for our neighbors in need for over 50 years. We provide food, clothing, dental vouchers, prescription vouchers, local transportation, rent, utility assistance, and the funds that we make through our thrift store are funneled back into Doorstep for services and other needs. The shop is currently located at 12th and Washburn. We would like to amend the permit to allow all of our program, services, staff, and volunteers to be under one roof. This is a cost-saving by only having the expenses of one building, as we do own the building at 12th and Washburn also. It allows us to price items at the shop where currently we ask for a reasonable donation. It offers a better location for the shop to be known and seen, to bring in more shoppers and therefore more income for Doorstep, and mostly it allows us to be more cohesive and efficient as staff and a group of volunteers who are working together to provide these services. I'm open for questions.
Just briefly, staff has made five recommendations. Are you in agreement with those recommendations?
Yes.
As they are? Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions from Ms. Kane? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would open the hearing for public testimony. Please come forward. Would ask that you address your comments directly to the Chair, and make sure your name's signed in and back.
Yes, I signed my name in. My name is Ben Swinnon. I'm the owner of the LLC that owns the building just right to the east of Doorstep. I don't take issue with the application or the change that Doorstep wants to take. I take issue with the conditions as they are spelled out, because they're extremely vague. There's been statement that the use of the space would be limited to 12%. It's nowhere in the conditions. There's also been statement that the sales would be certain days... Actually, three days have been mentioned in the process. Nothing in the condition states that that restriction would in fact apply. So what I'm really asking is that those... The conditions of the conditional use permit be clarified so that the impact on the neighborhood be limited. Again, one of the issues that was raised was the accumulation of equipment outside. I know there's a statement in the record that Doorstep asks its donors not to leave items outside overnight. The condition is they will pick it up the next day, but that is not even what the record considers, because they say we have no staff on Sunday. So clearly, they're not picking up on Sunday. So I think... I would like the conditions to be clarified to truly reflect the promises on one side and the expectations on the other. Other than that, I think Doorstep does a fabulous work for the community, and I have no principled objection to what they request. I would just like the Council or the Commission to clarify those terms.
Commissioners, are there any questions? All right, thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Commission?
Good evening. My name is Michael Bell. I'm the president of the Tennessee Town Neighborhood Improvement Association. That's the NIA in which Doorstep is located, and the NIA, at its July General Membership Meeting, voted to support Doorstep's application for the conditional use permit that will reflect its ability then to move Dovetail to Doorstep.
Before you go, are there any questions for Mr. Bell? Okay, thank you very much, sir. Any additional members of the public that would like to address the Commission? All right, seeing none, I would close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners, we want to discuss this. We've got at least staff recommendations, two and five, that have had some objection to. Retail sales shall remain subordinate is number two. Incidental and associated with the principal use of an office, it's noted that it is... 12% was what was talked about in the application, but not specified. What's the protection in terms of specificity, Ms. Driver, for incidental? Is there a threshold?
I guess the understanding is we didn't want to keep it at 12% because if something... If that were to change in a small manner, then they'd have to... I mean, to put a number like 12% in there, that would... I mean, that might make it change if it goes to 13... You know, 11% or 13, or what if they, you know, change, you know, a portion of their building? You know, I don't know if 12% was, you know, necessary to put in. I think subordinate, you know, provided the retail's incident... Maybe it does need to be clarified a little further, but I, you know, I...
Yes, Miss Finder?
To build off of kind of what Annie started, there is a statement of operations that is attached to the CUP. That is condition number one in the staff recommendation. That statement of operations, which is also included in your packet, does include the specificity for hours of operation and the square footage of the retail. What Ms. Driver's kind of hinted at there in terms of trying to have some flexibility, we do have some flexibility beyond that 12% from an administrative standpoint. I think it's up to 10% maybe. So the statement of operations is what we use to tide the conditions down for the CUP, just to clarify.
That helps.
Yep. Commissioners, additional questions?
There was a concern about the Sunday being closed and items being left outside also.
Is there anything in there, conditions, that does address the time from close of business on Saturday till Monday morning, so that items are picked up within the following day and moved in?
That's not... Oh, sorry.
Currently, the number five speaks for itself. It does require it to be moved indoors the following day. I would... But that obviously would not cover a 24-hour period where they're closed. So if there's some finessing of word, wording in there, I think we would be open to that.
The applicant did want to... They do have in their statement of operations, they did want to leave it open for the possibility of expanding the retail up to five days a week in the future. So if that's not... So that did indicate that in the statement of operations. So that was why they didn't just say, put on their hours of operation shall be 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. They left a little room in there for expanding in the future. I don't believe that's anything they anticipate anytime soon, but they just put it in there so that in the future, it might be a possibility. I mean, I suppose if that, you know, isn't something the Commission would desire, they could... They would have to update the statement to take that sentence out. Because this... One of the... It's the third paragraph. They leave it open that they could expand the retail five days a week or later. expand the retail five days a week or later, or later with a 7:00 p.m. closing time. That's not something they desire right now, but they put it in there for the future.
Further discussion, Commissioners?
I'm still not clear on the condition number five. Are you saying, Ms. Feinder, are you saying that does or does not take into account their open hours? Are you saying that that's only days that they're open, or every day of the week, calendar days?
Well, Commissioner Ringler, the shop itself is open a limited number of days. The office is overlaps and is open, so I think there's six days, if I'm doing the math right here, that the building itself is open. So that's why I was mentioning if it's not open on Sunday, then we would have a potential where that could be, items could be left out without meeting that condition of the following day.
So this condition is saying that it's up to the applicant, the property owner, to comply with the condition even if they're not open?
That's what it says, yes. That's what it says now. That's our expectation. If that is not their expectation, then I think that that should be, they should come up and mention that.
All right. Does anybody else have any, anything to discuss on this? And do we have a, oh, yes, please, Ms. Cavazos.
I mean, couldn't they just leave a sign out that says we will not take donations until Monday? You know, would that suffice that? No?
Ms. Cavazos, I, without getting into, others can provide more detail than I can. I think that was sort of the hope. People ignore signs. I know that's a surprise to all of you.
But they do diligence to do that.
But to be beyond their best practices, people still, yeah, ignored that. And so that was brought up during the neighborhood meeting, and at this point, that condition was the best way we could address that issue at this time. If there's other, better practices, we do stand to correct.
I might. So I live in the Kenwood neighborhood, and I work at Washburn, so I drive past their current shop twice a day at least and half for a long time, although I wasn't focusing on that shop. I have never, it's always been well-maintained, that I recall. I would assume that they would exercise due diligence in another location.
Okay. All right. If anybody is really kind of hard over on getting more specificity in the number five, I think that, discussing what you think the language should be would be good right now. Otherwise, I'd like to have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, let me add something that might address some of the issues. I mean, this imposes the burden on Doorstep to make sure, to enforce this, and if they don't, then their conditional use permit will be in jeopardy, because the city could take action to suspend or revoke it. So I think that gives them a strong impetus to comply with this requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Based on that comment, I would move to recommend approval.
Sir, a second.
To the governing body, the amendment to the conditional use permit, CU 17-1, based upon the findings and analysis listed in the staff report and subject to the conditions.
Second. Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Chris, please take the vote.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Mr. Canar?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Haw?
Aye.
Mr. Freed?
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Messina?
Aye.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Motion passes 9-0.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearing five, CPA 1702 by City of Topeka.
Mr. Chair, we're going to do some shuffling of staff, and we'll get the right people up here and present here in one moment. As they're settling in, I think it was last month that we made a presentation before you to kind of set the stage for this. Tonight is an official public hearing, and we are asking you to consider for action an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan for the Tennessee Town Neighborhood Plan. So the, I think, staff will go over summary of the plan. Some of that you heard last time, but also some of this is new. We did not have the implementation last time, and I think that's, that'll be looked at a little more closely for you. Also, I will mention, I'll go ahead and just let you know, there are, passed out tonight, there were what we call an addendum sheet, so you have the plan. And then after our neighborhood meeting, following that, we had several comments come in that a lot of it was, a lot of it was detail, some things that just needed to be corrected, others, things, there was a couple, one or two substantive things. But I think this addendum sheet talks about those changes and from the plan that's in your packet. So if you have any questions about those changes, Tim and Dan will be able to help you on that. There are also some changes to the maps that are currently in your packet, and generally, like I said, they are accuracy mainly, and a little bit of emphasis on a few things that came our way, was brought to our attention. But with that, unless there's any questions, it's me. Mr. Warner, kick us off.
All I have to add to that is that this is Mr. Asparza's first neighborhood plan, so we're quite happy about that. This is a good day. We're talking about a neighborhood plan at the planning commission, so, Tim, you want to take over?
All right, well, good evening, Commissioners. Yeah, my name is Tim Asparza. I'm the new neighborhood planner for the City of Topeka. I just want to say this is a very exciting time for Tennessee town, and I think one thing that I skipped out on last time was kind of a little bit of background. So I want to kind of go back and just give you guys a really quick background of why we're here today and how we got here. Okay, so last year, the Tennessee Town NIA applied for and won, one of two, 2017, stages of resource targeting grants. So with this grant comes $1.4 million in infrastructure funding, as well as $300,000 in housing rehabilitation. So SORT is a program that grants planning assistance and implementation funding, like I said, for neighborhoods. For the first year, this program comes with a new or updated neighborhood plan, which is an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, and thus requires a review from the commission. Hey, guys. So years two and three is when projects are implemented. However, many times, this can stretch past that time, just depending on how everything So the process, I actually really liked this slide. I thought I did a good job on it, what about you guys? So the neighborhood kicked off in March. We had a big neighborhood meeting where everybody was invited. We presented the current conditions of the neighborhood, and we kind of got a broad, some broad input on what they wanted to see and how we could help them. Following this, we met with the Plan Review Committee meeting, or Committee, several times throughout the spring and summer to get more detailed input about subtopics that are in the plan. And the final neighborhood meeting was held at the end of last month, and there we presented our recommendations for SORT funds for infrastructure, as well as housing. We took a vote if they agreed with it, if they were on board with it, and we went from Just as a refresher, this is the layout of the neighborhood, the neighborhood boundaries. I think I got this wrong last time. I don't know how I did that, but, so I'll cover it real fast again. So to the west is southwest Washburn Avenue. To the north is southwest Tenth Street. To the east is southwest Clay Avenue, and to the south is southwest Huntune. Just a few things that we highlighted in this plan, some things that separated from the 2001 plan, was an updated vision completed by our NIA, Mr. Michael Bell. We have new goals and guiding principles. We beefed up design guidelines to guide infill design, infill housing. We came up with new target areas to focus funds, and we provided a detailed guide for resources and project implementation, both funded and unfunded. So future land use is a big part of any of our plans. For this one, it does stray a little bit. We have a few changes from the 2001 plan. It is still primarily single-family use. We still have many churches in the neighborhood, and we wanted to highlight that in this plan. So they are shown on this map by the blue color, which is institutional. And we also now have the Grace Med property, which is blue as well. So that's the former Dylan's Lot, which used to be commercial. And that asterisk is a school that's planned to be there, so we have some text in the plan that kind of backs that up. So we identified a primary and a secondary area to prioritize our SORT projects. These are the areas that exhibit the highest potential for revitalization. So we have the northeast area of the neighborhood, which we deemed the primary, and we have the west area of the neighborhood. So this is the area opposite of what was covered in the 2001 plan, which is something I mentioned last time. To get these figured out, we took a composite map of, I think it was, infrastructure, housing conditions, tenure, and crime rates, and we put those all together. We brought that to the neighborhood, showed them what areas were most in need, what areas they thought would benefit the most from SORT funds and could have a ripple effect All right, so this is the biggest change in our plan. This is what we did most of the work for. Through staff evaluations and public input, we are recommending that sections of Munson Avenue, 11th Street, Lincoln Street, and all within the primary target area receive mill and overlay. We recommend that sidewalk infill and repair throughout the primary target area occurs, and we have a little section, I don't know if you guys can see this, okay, we have a little section here that comes out. We have a six-inch standardized water line under 11th Street from Clay to Washburn, so that extends throughout the whole neighborhood. And the reason for this is it's currently, the current pipe under there is over 100 years old, has many breaks, it's one to two inches, it's not very, it wouldn't sustain very more damage. So this one, much better, can withstand more breaks, sustainable system. I'm not the guy that talked about this, but it's good stuff. That's what the engineers told us. We have a new alley that's going from gravel to concrete between Lincoln and Lane, from Munson to 11th. And we have two sections of alley repair where alleys are currently in poor condition. As far as housing infill, we are recommending infill throughout the neighborhood, and that's what is indicated by these green stars. We have several places that are priority. We also have potential reuse, which is the Ice House. We received, we worked with engineering and various departments since time around to get as accurate cost estimations as we could. This was revised many times to lock it down. And as you can see, we are slightly under budget, which is 1.4 million, which leaves us a little bit of wiggle room, because they are, of course, just estimations still. Oops. And as far as housing, we have, let's see, we allocated a certain amount for rehab, as well as for infill. We worked with the neighborhood again to get these numbers, what they wanted to see more of. They wanted some infill, but they wanted to mostly focus on rehab as well. Here we go. All right, so another major aspect of this plan is establishing a plan for future funds, so not just SORT funds. So we have a section that includes neighborhood-wide projects. These are outside of the target areas. Some of them are inside. Some of them are unfunded. Some of them were closer to, some of them are closer to getting funding. And we also have 12th Street and Huntune, which are going to be completed through the half-cent sales tax. And we also recommend other alleys that the neighborhood thought needed some love, but there just wasn't enough money. Just a real quick timeline. So for SORT, and we're expected to stretch from, we're almost done here with the, hopefully with the planning, next year, 2018 and beyond, we're going to be hitting the implementation phases. And as far as 12th Street and Huntune, they will start in 2019 and stretch into the 2020s. So staff recommends approval of the Tennessee Town Neighborhood Plan as an element of the city's comprehensive plan. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Asparza? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We have members of the public that would like to approach now, speak, yes, sir.
Good evening again. I'm still Michael Bell, and I'm still the President of the Tennessee Town Neighborhood Improvement Association. Just real quickly, I did want to take time to extend kudos to the Planning Department, to Tim, to Dan, to Addison Sradlin, who was there at the beginning of the process, and of course, to the Director, Bill Feinder. They have been great throughout this process. They encouraged discussion, encouraged thinking big, but they were very clear on what could be and couldn't be done. This is my second neighborhood plan process. I was there when the first one was adopted in 2001. I carry this wherever I go. And both processes have been great and have set up Tennessee town to once again grow. I also wanted to take time to thank the NIA SORT committee members, committed volunteers all, and if you are here tonight... And if you are here tonight, Pat was on our committee, Don was on our committee. Okay, those are two. We had also Sandy Lassiter, who is the Tennessee Town NIA Secretary Treasurer, Reverend Branson Roberts at the First Church of the Nazarene, Pastor Harry Christian at Asbury Monala Church, Emma Ray, Joyce Reeveley, and myself. And I have viewed the addendum detailing the latest changes, and that looks good. So again, as Tim mentioned, at our SORT closing meeting on September 26th, the body voted recommending our updated plan and SORT strategies for approval.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Bell? I'd like to give you my thanks as well, and everybody that you mentioned for their hard work.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission?
Good evening. My name is Ruby Carson, and I'm a resident within Tennessee Town. I live at 1031 Southwest Buchanan. I am in the targeted area for rehab. It's very much needed in that area. My house is over 100 years old. It's actually in need of a lot of improvement. It would, the improvement would help the community. We have doorstep, we have daycares, we have parks we, that we would like to see to improve the Tennessee Town area. I was raised in Tennessee Town. I attended Buchanan School. It's just home to me. I left Topeka and was gone for some time, then came back and bought, re-bought into the area. And so I would like to see rehab. I would hate to see it become a donut, so to speak, in my vocabulary, where people leave the property and it just constantly continues to go down and becomes an eyesore to all of central Topeka. By rehabbing that area, I think we would be doing a very good, we would be doing something very good for the community. So I would like to see this plan passed. Thank you.
Ms. Carson?
Thank you.
Any other members of the public that would like to speak? All right, thank you very much. We close the public hearing on this. Commissioners, is there discussion? Yes, Mr. Armstrong?
Yeah, I just wanted to, again, thank Mr. Bell. I think in 2015, the Topeka Chamber did an expedition to Topeka, and instead of an inner-city visit, stayed and did some, some stuff here in the city. Mr. Bell is our tour guide as, as we took a bus tour of Tennessee Town almost two years ago. And I thought Pat as well. And even two years ago, a lot of the things that they were talking about, housing infill, churches in the neighborhood, the need for, for some additional help, all, I think, is kind of reflected in the plan that you guys ended up with. So really pleased that, I mean, their continued work in the neighborhood, and that, that really all, I think, is a part of what staff helped put together. So I think it looks really good.
I guess I would say also, I, that Tennessee Town is a really important part of our history. It's there on an important corridor between the library and Washburn. And the work that you've done to come up with the plan together, it's, it's exciting. So it'll be part of our future. So thank you.
Unless there's any other comments, I just, I just wanted to kind of put a capsule on this, because I was there too, in 2001, my very first, if not, in my first or second but, neighborhood plan. A lot of people come in and ask, when we do these SORT projects, does this work? And I think, coming full circle, you know, we look at the last target area we did in 2001, look at the conditions now, and look at the target area today, and decide for yourself. The area south of Munson, which I think was largely the target area back then, showing, showing pretty good conditions. It's not perfect, but it went from, this was probably the most seriously distressed block, I believe, one of the blocks in Topeka I've ever seen. That was on Lincoln, between 12th and Huntune. Really, an incredible transformation. That, that had the ability to really turn several of those blocks around and induce more private investment. And I think that's the hope here today, is we're going to do the same thing on the north half of the neighborhood. So it, it works, and thank goodness, Tennessee Town is a small enough neighborhood where it can really impact boundary to boundary. Some of our neighborhoods are quite large, and, you know, you obviously are trying to impact with this program a three to four-block area, and to, and to let that then spread and be that. So it works. And I just want to compliment Tennessee Town for sticking with the plan, and it's only as good as it is used. So I appreciate their stick-to-tiveness over the years.
Thank you, Mr. Fiender. Any other commissioners? Is there a motion?
I would, see if I can get this right. I would like to move that we recommend approval of the plan to the governing body as an element of the city's comprehensive plan.
Motion in a second. Anything else? Chris, please take the vote.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Ms. Messina?
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos?
Aye.
Mr. Freed?
Aye.
Mr. Haw?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Knar?
Aye.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Motion passes 9-0.
All right, that concludes our public hearings for the night. We have a discussion item, sign and building design code project.
Oh, yeah.
And that's what I thought everybody showed up for when.
Well, I don't know where they're going. I'm a little disappointed. Thank you. So commissioners, last month, we dipped our toe hardly, but we dipped our toe in this, into a new sign code, building design guideline update. And all I wanted to really do, I wanted to kind of, well, there's a couple comments, and then set the stage for our next steps. At your next meeting, November 20th, there will be a consultant here to make a presentation on sign code, legal, as well as just options, to kind of give you an orientation, if you will. And then it also will include building design standards, and, and the different options for that in our code. Just trying to, again, set kind of have a foundation to move forward on, this, they're not going to present on our code necessarily, but the, some of the structure you need to be aware of, some of the case law that you need to be aware of as we move forward, how it impacts decisions that you will, or recommendations you will see later. Those recommendations will come from a technical, a couple technical committees, one for the sign code, one for building design. And we were hoping that one of the planning commissioners could serve on one of those technical committees. You don't have to raise your hand right now. We will, but I want to put that out there, on the building design committee, technical committee, which Dan will head up, that'll be more design professionals, Mr. Warner and Mr. Haw, perfect fits for, for you. And these are, these are individuals we worked with, that were downtown, building design standards. So we'll, so if you are interested, let us know. This isn't a lot of meetings, but we'll probably start, have one meeting before the end of the year, probably in December, first or second week in December. And then we probably won't meet for a while until the spring, where we'll, we'll have a couple more meetings. So not a lot of work, but very important work. We hope to get in front of a good focus group. On the other side, on the sign side, Mr. Haw, our current planning manager, will head up the sign code technical committee and help staff that. So if you're interested in signs, anybody, you don't have to be, have any background other than an interest. We would love to have that. And the reason we, we, we don't usually task you too much, other than at these meetings, we do want to have that kind of a seamless transition coming from a committee to this body. I think it's very important to have some recognition and awareness of where, where and how this formed before it gets here. And so I think that's really important, because you're, you're very credible, you're, that's why you're here, you're a member of the, you know, you, you have a profession, but you also are obviously a layperson when it comes to developments and codes and things like that. And if it doesn't make sense to you, it's not going to make sense to a lot of other people. So it has to work at that point. So we hope to have some volunteers, just one on each. And then, and then we'll, we'll do that meeting on, in, in November, get a little orientation. This, Mr. Mark White, who's head of White &amp; Smith LLC law firm out of Kansas City, does his, he's actually worked with us in the past on, on a number of things. He works throughout the nation, just finished a sign code in Kansas City, Kansas. He's worked with, same thing in Overland Park, Texas, he's in Kentucky, he's all over. But I think he's one of the most respected voices in that, in that sign code, building design code, legal genre that we have here. So I'm happy to have him on board. And then lastly, still working on a visual quality assessment, I think now is our new term, visual, it's, it's a survey. We're working on some, some visuals of actual buildings and signs that, that we will have the community take. We'd like you to be a focus group in that before it goes out to the public. And so, to the extent we can, we'll, we probably won't do it here, but we'll probably have it probably around that time. So we'll get it out to you, and you can tell us what you liked and didn't like, or what we need to change. And, and so hopefully, we can do that before, before the meeting on the 20th. With that, unless there's any questions, that's all I had.
Questions? All right. Well, I think we moved right along through that. Unless there's an objection, we'll adjourn. All right. I thought we were going to be here.